Check, check. Cool. Check, check. There we go.
Melissa's and the attendees. Good afternoon. This is the City Council Study Session. It is October 1st, 2024, and the time is 2:49 PM. Can I have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Woodruff?
Here.
Mayor Buell?
Here.
Mayor Protam Yasi?
Here.
Counselor Youssef? Counselor Bosmans?
Melissa Youssef is on line. I don't know if, Melissa, can you unmute?
Oh, yes, I can. But yes, I'm here.
Great. And then I know Counselor Bosmans is trying to get on, and so we'll let the record show when he jumps on. Great. All right, first item on the agenda, we have organizational stewardship, reading, oh, reading of the Indigenous land acknowledgement. This is a call to honor and respect Indigenous sovereignty and self-determination. As residents and visitors of Durango, we are called upon to educate ourselves about the history and cultural heritage of the land we inhabit. The city of Durango is situated on the ancestral homelands and territories of the N'uchu Ute, Hicaria Apache, Apache, Pueblos of New Mexico, Hopi-Sinom, Hopi, and Dene-Navajo nations. The original stewards of this land were forcibly removed and exposed to countless atrocities by the United States government, including repeatedly broken treaties, forced assimilation, the tragic legacy of Indian boarding schools, and the loss of ancestral homelands. We recognize lasting generational trauma exists within native communities today. We affirm the continuing importance of ancestral sites to descendant communities as integral to the living cultural landscape. This acknowledgement only becomes meaningful when combined with accountable relationships and informed actions. May this serve as a step towards inclusion and reconciliation. Next item- This is a call to honor. I was like, I thought I was done talking. Next up, we have Financial Services Monthly Report. Devin Schmidt, or no, Elliot. Great.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor and Council. We are back with our regular financial updates, so look forward to going through it with y'all. This is for the month of August. So, August 2024 Monthly Financial Update. As we always start, sales tax forecast, budget to actuals, and year-over-year. We are looking pretty similar to where we did last year as far as trend analysis goes, but we have increased by just a little bit, by about 2.8%. And the variance is about 8% to what we projected. So this is still in line with what we presented to council for the mid-year budget amendment, and this is one of the reasons why we increased that revenue. So, thank you very much for working with us on that, but this is why we made that change. This is the general fund, I'm sorry, this is the August budget-to-actuals revenue. So we are actually still trending where we predict in the general fund for budget-to-actuals on a seasonal basis. We are just a little bit below, and that continues to just be because of the intergovernmental transfers, which we continue to receive and then plug in as soon as we get. And it's generally just a little bit after this presentation that we end up getting those. So, nothing of note or too concerning that we have noted here. Next, we have the budget-to-actuals expenses. So expenses are a little bit down through August. We are getting to the time of the year where there's a little bit more variance, and if you look at that orange line, the historic, you can kind of see that as we move into this part of the year, there is generally a little bit more variance, and you'll see that a little bit more clearly on some graphs to come. But we're still within the range of expected expenses, and as with all year, expenses are less than forecasted. So having expenses less than forecasted is generally a good thing for solvency. Next, we have Enterprise Fund Budget-to-Actuals. And as you can see there, we actually had a pretty big increase. Projected revenues were 3.134 million, and actual revenues were 4.152. And again, just as I was saying, if you look at that orange line, especially right around that August 23rd gray line, I don't know if I can point with this, but this is the time of the year where we have the most variance in both revenues and expenses. So when we're doing our forecasting, and you can see on the actual forecast, even though there's variance leading into 2024, it tends to level out because expenses and revenues can come in one month or the next. It's usually just shifted by one or two. So, nothing to note there of concern, but it is great that revenues for August came in much higher than we had initially predicted. On the expense side for enterprise funds, we are tracking along exactly, not exactly, but we're tracking along within comfortable range of the expected expenses. So the fund balance for all of the revenue funds are pretty healthy as of the end of August. Next, we have capital budget-to-actuals. We are seeing a pickup, and we anticipate that through the end of the year as we get capital project invoices in and all those kind of trailing expenses to actually completing the projects. We've had most of the summer to work on them, and now we're getting the bills from the contractors. So we do anticipate that both the revenues, because they're attached to the expenses, but both the revenues and expenses for the capital funds to increase towards the end of the year. And then, same thing with expenses. They did come, the trend was that they were coming down a little bit from June and July, but we had an anomaly spike, and that was actually just the purchase of Buckley on the expense side that you can see in June. So through the year, it's coming down, but the expenses, again, are within that range that we expect for capital projects. And looking towards the end of the year, we do expect those expenses to increase. Other financial services updates. We have kicked off the 2025 budget, and we look forward to presenting it to you on October 14th. As a side note, all of your printed budget books are actually in your mailboxes right now. So look forward to having a conversation with you all about that and presenting it to you. All the 2025 capital proposals have been reviewed by the Financial Advisory Board. They've been a great partner to work with for those. So, again, we just look forward to presenting the budget for you, and accounting is starting to prep for end-of-year close and everything that starts with the annual comprehensive financial report, and starting to prep for that for next year. With Fleet and Facilities, we've had 41 special requests for facility maintenance. Those were all completed. 119 work orders completed, 184 pieces of inventory issued over the counter in the warehouse. So that's both to internal customers and external customers, the public. And then also plow prep has begun. So every year, plow prep is a major job for our Fleet Division, and they've already started to do that so that we're ready when snow starts to fly. And then for customer service, AMI Billing installed new and enhanced repeater for a utility billing network, which has been a huge improvement for a couple of neighborhoods here in Durango, about 1,000 meters, so that it's more accurate and more efficient to get those readings. And then we've had some utility refunds, 53 totaling $13,978. And we did, and the food rate, food tax rebate, excuse me, we ended up receiving 156 applications, and we're able to give a rebate totaling $26,407. And that is it for the financial, oh, I'm sorry, future process in the budget. So just as we were talking about, we will be doing the budget retreat October 14th. And then October 15th, that very next day at the council meeting, will be the request for a public hearing. In the first council meeting in November, we will have reconciliation and a public hearing for the budget. And then November 19th is the first reading of the budget. And then December 3rd will be the budget adoption and mill levy certification. So just want to give you all a road back on where we're going for budget and finance. And that is it for the financial.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions for Elliot on financial? Melissa or Olivier? I don't know if Olivier got on yet.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. We have no update on the diversity, equity, and inclusion and belonging cross-functional teams. So next up is Environmental Sustainability Monthly Report with Marty Poole.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am giving an update here. This is specific to follow up to Mayor Protam Yasi's request for an update on our goals that are outlined in our sustainability plan and various data and what those goals are. And so this will be a little higher perspective and a little bit longer than our typical updates, but this is at the specific request of the information that Mayor Protam requested. So, the sustainability plan was adopted in 2022. It's a community-wide plan, so it applies to Durango and all of our environmental sustainability efforts collectively, not just the city as a single organization, but it is how is the city as a municipality working with the community on those goals. The city's strategic plan was just recently adopted, and environmental sustainability is housed within operational stewardship as goal 1.3, and this is showing that it's expected, and sustainability is expected to be integrated across the organization and as a commitment as our local municipality. And the key takeaway here is the city of Durango, when we talk about sustainability efforts, it's, you know, that is my title, but it's by no means just me. It is the Sustainable Programs Division and the efforts that are directly managed there and through that budget, but it is very much a cross-departmental commitment and integration to all of that work. And then even beyond- And then even beyond, in our coordination with our residents, businesses, nonprofits, things like that. So, I'm going to go pretty quickly through this, but this information is in your packet. The sustainability plan has five sectors, as I believe you've seen before. There is not a direct one-to-one correlation between every city department and a sector of the plan. The sectors are really guided by best practice, categorization, and viewing of sustainability efforts in communities. But you'll see that there are some pretty natural, strong associations and overlaps. So obviously, we have a transportation department, we have a community development department. They are going to be most closely tied with that sector, consumption waste. We have municipal trash and recycle, et cetera. So this is just kind of show you a little map of how those efforts, where the responsibility of those efforts falls most strongly across our organization. And I will point out, climate change impacts and our greenhouse gas emissions are cross-sector and cross-departmental. So they most strongly align with energy, and that is the work that is primarily headed by the Sustainability Programs Division along with community development, because that's where we consume energy and where the majority of our greenhouse gas emissions come from, along with transportation. Sorry. So I gave an update to Council in April about our greenhouse gas emissions progress towards our goals. We have reduced 10% community-wide from our 2016 baseline. And our goal that was adopted in 2021 was a 50% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. So we have about six more years to achieve 40% more reductions. There are no other energy-specific plans related to anything adopted from departments across the city. The applicable areas of work here are building codes and permits, energy efficiency, and our energy performance contract, and essentially pushing for more renewables and more efficiency across our organization and our community. I wanted to take this moment to say, as I go through the rest here, that what I would like to show is, to Counselor Yazi's request, these goals and this data lives throughout a lot of our work. And so I'm trying to summarize this as quickly as possible, but it is a broad topic. And when we talk about, you know, are we achieving our sustainability goals? There's a lot of topics there, there's a lot of data, there's a lot of goals, there's a lot of adopted plans. And so I'm going through this very quickly, certainly happy to follow up with more detail at a later time or working with the appropriate department's staff. We're getting slightly more energy-efficient as a community with electricity per capita. We are getting less energy-efficient with natural gas per capita. So that's not a good trend. We are seeing a significant increase in onsite solar installation. A lot of that work is obviously in conjunction with LPA and private residences, property owners. So that's really encouraging to see, and 2024 and 2025 should see even more drastic increases. So this is a great trend. When it comes to transportation, obviously, you see there a lot of transport, adopted transportation plans and goals. These are strongly aligned with sustainability principles when it comes to transportation and development for density, multimodal transportation, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, improving safety, things like that. So obviously, all the work that our transportation department does, and then adding in the electrification of vehicles, EVs, EV charging infrastructure, e-bikes, our fleet transition, things like that. We're seeing a just fascinatingly exponential increase in EV use at our charging stations year after year, and we are doing our best to keep up with those trends. Looking at other states like California that we're a little bit behind the curve on, they continue to see those incredible growths. So we are in the middle of a pretty incredible transportation paradigm shift when it comes to the electrification. Transit ridership is back up after a pandemic dip, which is great to see that service for our community helps keep, you know, congestion down and serving those individuals who use that for getting around town. When it comes to consumption and waste, the city does not actually have any adopted consumption and waste plans. We have a partnership with Table to Park and Compost, providing expanded composting services, including, we're piloting just this year, an on-demand leaf collection service, which was one of the top pieces of feedback about fall cleanup services, was to meet people when their leaves are dropping outside of the regular scheduled service. So that's a pretty cool innovation that we're piloting this year, doing household hazardous waste collections with the county, implementing the bag fee, obviously, all of this standing, longstanding recycling services provided by our municipal services and all of those staff up there that work hard every day to keep our community clean. We are seeing a slight per capita decrease in waste sent to the landfill and a pretty substantial landfill diversion rate. So that's the percentage of material that is not going to landfill, that is going to other sources. That was increased was because of the composting expansion with Table to Farm and some of their high commercial accounts, such as Scott Brewing, that's now composting their waste, their spent beer mash. I will say this data is only for city and city contracted services. So we don't have data on waste from private haulers. So it is admitted gap and imperfect data in this area. Waste data can just be really challenging to come by. Water, we have several adopted plans related to our water system. We have drought management plan, stormwater master plan, water systems master plan. We have a vulnerability plan, which relates to responses to climate change and severe drought. I will say, I will note that we don't have any water conservation plans. So our water system master plan, I've reviewed it, and it is mostly about the needs of supplying water to our community. There is some mention of water conservation and end-user management, but in, when it comes to water systems, the delivery of clean water and the collection of wastewater and treatment of that is, there's a whole lot of considerations there. Actually, addressing the end user and what they do or don't decide to do with that water is kind of an entire separate realm almost. And it is different than the infrastructure piece. It's more about people's choices and behaviors. And so some of these plans don't touch on those as strongly as I've seen in other communities. Applicable areas of work, obviously, we have really high-quality water, amazing work with our water treatment, hard-working staff, making sure our distribution and collections infrastructure is keeping that up day in and day out. High-quality wastewater treatment, returning that water to the Animus River, piloting some programs to reduce water consumption, but they're kind of in their infancy. Water consumption per cap, or water consumption total has stayed pretty flat for the past six or so years, which we have reliable data. That means per capita consumption is going down slightly. We use about 60% of our water outdoor, 40% indoor. We are seeing supplies decrease at a rate faster than we, as a community, are reducing our consumption. That said, our water, the rates that are reducing are still above where our water rates are at. So it's not what we're seeing with those climate projections and water supply projections. They're not saying that we would necessarily dip into not being able to utilize our water rates. And at this time, we don't utilize all of our water rates. So there's some interesting discussions around there about what we're able to take versus what we would want to conserve, and more time than I have now. Natural Systems and Ecology, a lot of lands management plans, parks and area management plans. The Durango Mesa Plan incorporates a lot of sustainability. We're working on dark sky ordinance, forestry plan inventory update, open space management, wildfire mitigation, and our wildlife conflict, addressing those issues. There's a, Natural Systems and Ecology have a lot of data points that we could look at in terms of biology and ecosystems, wildlife habitat, all kinds of things. It gets, the amount of ways that you can look at how our communities interacting with the natural environment are large and varied. But one interesting trend is just looking at our open space use for recreation, because that does increase the strain on those lands and the plants and animals, erosion, trail erosion, things like that. So we saw a dip during the pandemic, then, or actually, an increase, sorry, it's opposite of transit. We saw an increase during the pandemic when everyone was going outside, then a decrease, and now it's increasing again. I know that was really quickly. I hope that is speaking to some of what the Counselor Yazi was asking, Mayor Protem Yazi was asking for insights into where, you know, the variety of goals, the variety of areas that we're working on with sustainability, the types of data that we are collecting and the trends that we're looking at to see if we are achieving the goals that we've laid out in these various plans. I do put together the annual sustainability report to try and summarize this information. I'll note that the ability to track data varies by topic and the availability of that data. Some of this data is resources that are metered very tightly, and we have really good data there. Some other areas are a little more complex and harder to get really nitty-gritty data for. And then I would just point that the, when you look at the five sectors of our adopted sustainability plan, we dive into then departmental-level plans that address the specifics of sustainability, the goals that we're trying to achieve. And I would say, looking, doing kind of an inventory, and this was brought up when we were putting together the sustainability plan, when you look at those sector-specific plans, those departmental plans, they vary in their inclusion of sustainability principles and they're really laying out sustainability goals in certain sectors. They, I guess I'm struggling how to articulate it, but they, you can look at a topic like water, a topic like transportation, a topic like energy, they're all going to have their own goals of what would be, what we're trying to achieve with sustainability, and there is some variety of how much sustainability is included and how much certain goals are called out for conservation, reduction, things like that. And that is it for me. Questions?
Thank you. Does anyone have questions?
I don't have any questions, Marty, but I do appreciate you updating us and the community because there are a lot of concern about sustainability in the future. And since we are putting a lot of money towards this, I think it's critical that the public is aware that we're on top of it, so thank you.
Counselor Yusuf or Bosmans, I know, let the record show, Olivier Bosmans has been promoted, and he is online as well. I'm going to say that's a no from either one of them, too, so thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
Next up, we have the Innovative Housing and Economic Development. First up is Community Development Monthly Report with Daniel Murray.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor Buell. Daniel Murray with Community Development, and I'm joined by Tommy, who's online. So when I am done speaking, he'll take over the second half of our presentation. And let's continue. The strategic plan goals we're speaking to this afternoon are innovative housing and economic development, as well as safety and quality of life. So our update this month is focusing on major projects. So we're broken into three different categories for you. Projects that are under review right now are the West Side Triangle Mobile Home Park, which is up 160. This is proposed for annexation, as well as a conceptual development plan. This is a proposal that goes from roughly, I think, in the 75-unit count to up to 107 units. This is a very unique and exciting project for the city. It's actually a partnership with the Elevation Community Land Trust, where they're going to own the land, and the residents own their units, and it'll be a significantly improved place for many people to live in our community. That is on an upcoming agenda for you. The setting of the hearing date is in October. The substantive conversation will be November 5th. And so you'll have, I think, a room full of very supportive residents, as we did at Community Development Commission. Next here is the Crater Apartments. This is in Three Springs, South Fork area. Crater was formerly known as BLD. It's a 500-unit apartment complex on the vacant land that is north of what is currently Mesa Verde. Senior living that's under construction, so if you can picture that, just to the west of Mercy. It's now being called Crater and going through some re-permitting based on a revised scope of work. The Garden Schwartz Building is downtown, and it is coming in for a pretty extensive second-floor remodel to make way for future tenants. Other projects that have been recently approved, we have all three in really the same location off of Wilson Gulch. Starbucks has gone through permitting, as well as a home-to-suites hotel, and then automotive repair center. So those would go next to building permitting. Under construction, as you drive around town, you see the REI in Bodo. The Durango Fire Station, just down the road from us, Station 2, is making rapid progress. Downtown Durango Hotel has made a lot of progress this year. That's roughly 202 hotel rooms. They're shooting to be open in the spring of '25, so months away on that. Affinity Apartments is a 162-unit apartment complex. This is in Three Springs. It's adjacent to the Roundabout, but it's actually such an irregular parcel that it actually fronts on another, two other streets in Three Springs. So this is just south of Mercy and north of the VOA. The next project here, staying in Three Springs, is Mercy Medical Office Building, north of Mercy itself. The building itself is largely completed, and the next phase would be a tenant finish. So there's still more to go there, but it is looking very, well, put together and soon to be onto the next phase. Going up Gigline Gulch, which is also County Road 238, is a 12-unit townhome development. You may have seen a lot of grading and utility work occurring, and that's just starting to go vertical now. Mesa Verde is the senior living development I mentioned out in, off of Crater Road, north of Wilson Gulch Road. That is making rapid progress. It's a very large complex, over 100 senior living assisted care units. And then the last project we have to provide an update on is on North Main, 3030 North Main. It is going to be rebranded as the Boundary Hotel. It's currently the Days Inn. That's going through an extensive remodel. Switching gears to our building permitting, a few updates for you. As you may have seen in the Herald and in other communications, back in July, we launched our online permitting system. I have some stats I'll share with you in a moment. We are continuing to work with our colleagues, not only in IT, but in public works, engineering specifically, in rolling out OpenGov. It is our more modern way of receiving permitting applications for land use, building, code compliance, and engineering permitting. So a lot happening there. It's gaining traction and allowing us to provide a lot of our services online. Some other updates in building are, we're about four months with our current inspector. He's really hit the ground running, getting to know the development community. And we've been able to take inspections now back in-house. For a period of time, we are handling inspections with a third party, but Jared Cabot is able to do all of our inspections locally, with the exception of plumbing, and which we still contract with a master plumber. That is per state statute, which is why, come January 1, rather than bring on a master plumber on to staff, we're going to rely on the state to do our plumbing inspections for us. This is actually very common in all of our peer communities, certainly in the area. And it is what we're currently doing and have always done for electrical. So it's a common practice to rely on state inspectors when there are state standards. We are still going to be, for the near term, utilizing third-party for plan review, building code compliance. That's an entity we've utilized over the last six months, and we're going to continue that through the end of the year, at which time, as you saw in one of your finance updates, that we are able to hire a building official come January 1. So that's a big improvement, allows us to bring, again, the same expertise in-house and do the type of work that we want to do locally with consistency and predictability from our development community. The other update that was also in the Herald this last Friday was our update to our building valuation fees. That was actually something council took action on back in May. We set an October 1 deadline to pair with the housing fair share, so these items have been prepared and are now in place. So our building department fees are updated based on 2023 valuations, which is a long time coming. On the right side of the screen, some data points for you. Since we launched OpenGov back in July, we've received 67 land use applications, planning applications. We've approved 20 of those. Total right now in planning, we have 137 active permits in process. That's the full scale of anything that's administrative, all the way up to what goes to yourselves, as well as our CDC. In the building permitting world, we have received 55 building permits and issued roughly half of those over the last four months, and we have a total of 160 active building permits in community development right now. So we're in full swing. There's often a big push this time of year to get permits issued and get projects going. Overall, this update illustrates how community development is meeting several of council's goals to provide for housing opportunities, economic development, as well as outstanding customer service, and it is through this process that we achieve those goals.
Excellent.
Great, thanks. And so from here, unless you have any questions of me.
Oh yeah, any questions for, yes, we got it, go.
Thank you, Daniel. The affinity apartments, the 162 units, are they gonna, are they gonna be rental only?
Those are all rental.
All rentals?
Market rate.
And market rate.
Not an affordable component.
Okay. And then the Crater Apartments, we approved those earlier in the year for that two-phase development, if I remember correctly. Are they gonna go along with that same design plan and those same plans? Are they gonna reapply and redo all of those?
Yeah, I'll give you a high level, and this will also be coming to you in November. Actually, that one can come to you independently, so that will be on your October 15 agenda, Crater will be. So it is a, what was four stories is now three-story buildings. The unit count was 490, and it's 500 now, so they added a few additional units. And it's broken into five phases rather than two, yes. Still one parcel, but a necessary phasing plan to address financing.
And there were, if I remember right, some affordability, like, I mean, a miniscule, about like five or 10 units? Will they be still doing something similar?
They have a voluntary affordable component as well, and when this comes to your agenda, Mark will be prepared to speak to that.
Sorry, last question. Were they grandfathered into the fair share ordinance before it was implemented?
In a sense, yes, in that anything submitted and under review prior to today would not have been subject to the fair share.
Okay.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Whoops. Okay, well, thank you for that update. I'm curious, do you anticipate any problems with annexing the Mobile Home Park into the city of Durango? Because I know that they have big infrastructure problems there with the sewer and the water.
Yeah. That transition from onsite septic to city sewer is one of the many benefits of this proposal of annexation and of redevelopment. So we're planning for that to be the case, and currently, I'm not aware of any reasons why that wouldn't be feasible.
Anything online? Okay, we'll move to Tommy Crosby next.
Right. Tommy, let me know how I can drive for you.
Thanks, Daniel. Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'll keep this update brief. First update is regarding our Common Threads project that you all are well versed on at this point, after the handful of years we've been trying to get this installed. We have some good news. After our last RFP, which proved unsuccessful, we let council know that we were going to start considering alternative locations, and through a partnership with our team at the airport and the original artist, we were able to identify the location that you see on the screen today, those red dashes. This is the area when you are leaving the passenger pickup and drop-off, and then you're also leaving the parking garage, I'm sorry, the parking lot. You'll be able to view the art piece from both locations. It's a lot easier pathway to install than the 550-160 intersection. You're not gonna have to coordinate with CDOT. There's not gonna be a need for night work. Overall, the project is going to have a much smoother runway for takeoff. We are working diligently to see if there's any way we can get this installation done before the end of 2024. If not, we're targeting early 2025. And I just really wanna highlight the partnership with the airport and Tony's willingness to work with us on this project. We feel like there is good momentum with the the new phase of construction that the airport is entering, that we'll be able to take advantage of the contractors they have on-site and all the subcontractors to really market and advertise this project with with that cohort of workers who already will be on-site and potentially have some extra capacity to take on a project that is relatively limited in in scope, so, and size. So just wanted to provide council an update. We'll, we'll keep you all in the loop once we have a path forward for working with the contractor, but I think this is, this is the the best path forward to actually get this project installed and for our community and many visitors to our community be at the airport to view. Daniel, if you could flip to the next slide. Last update today is just a brief grant program update. So year to date, we have funded about 60 projects, just over $600,000. A few of those grant programs I wanna highlight are the the Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Program, our Renew Grant Program, which focuses on providing businesses an incentivized way to make property improvements that are visible from the public right-of-way. That might be new signage, repaving a sidewalk, restriping a parking lot, updating the exterior of your business, replacing a door or window, whatever that might be. The city will partner with that business and match dollar-for-dollar up to $5,000, any property improvements that are visible from the public right-of-way. So it's a great way to ease some of the burden that businesses can can face when it comes to meeting our design standards and engineering standards. It's a great incentive that we're able to offer to kind of meet them, meet them part way. And then last is our Durango Creates Grant Program. That's funded over 21 smaller arts and culture projects in 2024. The last note I'll leave you with on this is, of those 60 projects, that's, that's really 60 partnerships that the city has taken on. We're, we're working with individuals, with groups, with community organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses. There's a really wide spectrum of small but meaningful partnerships that the city is taking on through these grant programs. So I just wanna thank council for your support in the continuation of those, those really meaningful partnerships that we're building out in community. But that, that's all I have for you today. Try to keep it brief. Happy to answer any questions folks might have.
Thank you, Tommy. I'm super excited about the project finally getting installed. Is there any status on where the arc of history was, and then maybe that empty, like where this project was going to go? If there's any plans for art or landscape or anything in that area?
Good question. There's no, no active plans right now. I've been continuing to bring that up with the Durango Creative District every couple months, just so it is on their radar. I think we were expecting, quite frankly, an easier pathway for the Common Threads install at 550-160. So I don't think we have been too focused on adding an additional project to that intersection. Granted, I think the, the scope of install will be quite a bit easier, since the pedestal's already there, and really all it would take is mounting a project, but I think we've been slightly wary of investing additional funding towards the 550-160 intersection, just proving how difficult it's been to get Common Threads installed.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, just real quick. Tommy, sorry to put you on the spot. The Renew Grants, can you give me a quick reminder on, is that like a one-to-one match for, for businesses, right?
Yep, that's a dollar-for-dollar match with a cap of $5,000. So let's say a business is replacing their sign and repainting the front facade of their building. If that project is $10,000 or more, the city would match that up to $5,000. And that's for public-facing property improvements.
Okay, awesome. And then it looks like we had six businesses, and those are individual businesses that are supported through taxpayer money. What, what businesses were those, if I may ask?
Yeah, let me think off the top of my head. So the most recent Community Development Commission meeting approved two Renew Grants. One was for 1175 Camino, the building between Backcountry Experience and Prohibition Dispensary. They're moving a door, so the tenant can, right now, the door's about three, it's like a floating door, three feet above the ground. They're relocating that to ground level and replacing the door with a window. The second Renew Grant that was approved was the Tangled Horn up near College and Eighth. They're a new bar and restaurant. They are, they are replacing their sign and repainting their building. Cream Beanberry, the owners of that building, are actually restoring the front facade to its, closer to its original historic, I think it used to be an old historic bakery. They're, they're restoring it to more of an original facade look and feel. El Moro, they received a Renew Grant this year for their outdoor patio area and painting their front facade. They were replacing the metal railings. Frida's on North Main, they received a Renew Grant for repainting, repainting their roof. Priority Sales and Rental, they received a Renew Grant for their signage. And I believe the last one was Union Social House, also received a Renew Grant for replacing and updating some signage.
Awesome, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anyone else online?
I just wanted to say, I'm kind of excited about Common Threads, Tommy. I think with all the updates and the stuff that we're doing out at the airport over the next, what, three, four years, it's gonna be, you know, a nice location for it, for everyone coming into our town. I think it'll be really nice.
A great silver lining to, I think, the, an alternative location. I think it's, it's the best alternative location we, we could have landed on.
Yeah, I think it's really great. So good job to you guys for that.
All right, excellent. Looks like up next, we have safety and quality of life, the Public Safety Monthly Report.
Hello, Mayor, Protem Mayor and Council. My name is Bryce Current, the Chief of Police, Durango, Colorado, and our strategic plan goal is safety and quality of life. So Durango Police Department's vision is one department, one community, one Durango, committed to protecting the vulnerable, building trust, and creating a safe place to, to live, work, and play. And our hashtag, and something you'll start seeing on some of our social media, is hashtag #OneDurango, or a slogan, One Durango. So with National Night Out, somebody might recognize this boy. There's a boy named Charlie there, came up and grabbed my finger, and I tried to take him to the police cars, but he didn't wanna go. He wanted to go to the fire truck, as usual. But we wanna thank our community partners for weathering the rain that night and setting up booths for National Night Out at Buckley Park. It's an event that's held every August, on the first Tuesday of August, and we wanna thank everybody that participated in that. So Labor Day this year, and, so in 2024, we were, we were more proactive than we were in recent years, where we were more reactive and educational at times. This year, we partnered with the event organizers and sent out PSAs and let them know that we would be issuing citations, and they put some of that on the motorbike websites, and it went over really well. Just kidding, sometimes it didn't, but they were, but, but they knew what we were doing and what our, what our goals were for the community, which was safety. And on Labor Day, we had 11 more arrests this year than 2023. Officer-initiated calls were up by 30 incidents, but emergency calls were actually down by 47. And DUI arrests were up 11 this year from last year with a total of 13. And one of the cool statistics were there were 15 assaults back in 2003, and there were only two this year in 2024, and we think that was largely in part of the walking patrols downtown, back and forth to the bars, and just partnering with the public, and then all the stops going on all over town and partnering with the organizers as well. Another good strategy that we used was, there was a, a group of stunt riders, and we looked on YouTube and ticketed the main rider, and he requested a warning, and in return for the warning, he said he'd get the entire group to comply this year and not do their stunt riding through town, which we agreed. And our goal is to prevent crime and to deter crime, not to punish, and so that worked out for us there. So in the picture here is Holly. I wanna share a success story. So Holly permitted me to share this story. I met her when she was a little girl, and she was a victim of a case that I was working on when I was a detective. So I saw her this last weekend. After working a grave shift, she decided to go to church instead of going to bed, and that's where the picture came from. So last year, a local business owner called and asked if we could help her. She lived at Purple Cliffs previously, and then later on the river. The business owner said she was an extremely hard worker, and they wanted to support her and, and help her, and she was, Holly at the time was supporting a man down on the river in a tent there, and they wanted to help her kind of escape the situation. So Holly contacted me and said she had a warrant in New Mexico, and she wanted to take care of it and get her life back in order. So there was a local nonprofit group that gave her a ride, actually, down to New Mexico, where she could take care of that warrant. Later, she called me from jail crying because they wouldn't let her out, and I called the judge, but the judge, she wanted to keep her in jail, to keep her connected to resources and clear out all her cases for a little while. So she was connected with resources. She found a counselor that she really loved while she was in jail. And so last Sunday, I saw her in church, and she has a full-time job, a residence, and she visits her children, and she's clean and she's happy. I say that to say this, Judge Margeson and his functional municipal court are a critical resource for stopping the negative behavior and getting folks back on track here in our, in our town. We welcome any upcoming, upcoming treatment options through SORD, Project, Access, the hospital, the sheriff, and others, if we can partner with them. We also wanna thank the community for partnering with the judge and the court with his diversion program that we have going here. The next slide here are our core numbers. So, you know, we average between 60 and 70 calls per, per month with our core team, our co-response, which is a police officer and a counselor teamed up together. They had a few awesome stories this month, or the month of August, partnering with community members in August to find housing, and they participated in the Mountain Towns Conference in Durango, helping communities see the value of our co-response team, and a lot of you were there. And so the next slide, our fuel budget proposed for '24 was 150,000, and this proposed budget is 100,000. And the fuel spending is going down a couple of reasons. One, the, we're using the city yard instead of gas stations, but the more significant reason is we're operating hybrid vehicles, our Tahos. With the added stationary use, we're getting about eight miles to the gallon, and these hybrids are getting around 20 miles per gallon. We have 48% of our daily fleet hybrids, and we have 47 total vehicles in our fleet. 44 are actually daily use, so we wanna continue that trend. On social media, folks keep saying that our vehicles are electric, and we've even had people walking around, videoing, trying to find the plug-in, but they're not, they're hybrids. And so the next slide is our August Part One of And so the next slide is our August Part One offenses. So August's current number of offenses in 2024 is a notable 38% higher than in 2023, larceny and theft category shows a sharp rise in August in 2024 from 77 incidents as compared to 23, 48 incidents. And the four year average of 67 incidents. In addition to 95 thefts in 2020, a year over year comparison shows a 22.2 increase in thefts related theft related offenses signaling a potential concern there. Larceny and theft and motor vehicle theft are on the rise with motor vehicle theft seeing the largest percentage. And I know it's seven, but that's within a month. And these are areas which we need to focus on as we move forward. While violent crime continues to decrease, property crime may be on the rise. So Part One Crimes continued. So there's initial sharp decline from 2020 to 21, which we see most most months and most quarters. Followed by fluctuations between 22 and 23. However, in 24 marks a notable increase of offenses compared to the previous years, bringing the count closer to the 2020 peak. But still below it. So each month we're seeing the same trend. Theft is going up, bikes, cars, shoplifting are trending towards the 2020 numbers. So right now, one of the tools we're using are the flock safety cameras. And because of the rise in vehicle thefts in Colorado and Durango, we're focusing on limited personnel growth and more on technology. Even though studies do show that we need we need to grow our our full time positions as well. We are currently using flock safety and they're still image cameras is what they are. And they take photos of license plates, not people or cars, just the plates and send real time alerts to officers if the vehicles are stolen or if a person's missing or if we have an Amber Alert. Or if we have, and we actually have similar technology in our vehicles as well. So the technology captures objective evidence without compromising individual privacy. And so the most critical point for the public is it utilizes retroactive searches to solve crimes after after they've occurred. Additionally, it uses real time alerting our hot list vehicles to capture wanted criminals. So we've located missing folks and suicidal individuals in neighborhood neighboring communities because they also use this technology in the communities around us. And to ensure proper usage, obviously, we have guardrails in place and we've made the policies and usage and statistics available on our website currently. And we've most recently found a stolen vehicle, stolen trailer and stopped a car that was used in a homicide in Santa Fe. So with citations, they've increased significantly, showing an 85% increase compared to the four year average. In August, accidents have decreased 16% over the last four years. The number of traffic contacts has grown substantially from 247 in 2020 to 587 in 2024, which is a 49% increase on the four year average, which is showing how much work everybody's doing. Warnings have increased 62%. And citations. Traffic citations have more than doubled, representing 107% increase compared to the four year average, showing a solid emphasis on traffic enforcement. Traffic enforcement has become a priority, significantly increasing citations and warnings. We've cracked down on traffic violations and attempted to address community concerns related to traffic safety. And we've also focused heavily on DUI. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions? Yeah.
How many flock cameras do you have?
So we have seven currently deployed and we're going to have six more deployed. And when I say seven, that's probably two at each road because you capture both coming and going. And it's basically, you know, surrounding the community. And so if we have a critical incident, we know not to set up, you know, you know, to set up within the city because we know people are already gone or people that have come in from other other cities that have committed something, you know, a serious felony or a criminal event that we know they've come into our community.
Anything from online? All right.
Thank you.
Up we have, what? Oh, same. I was like, I thought you were a separate one, but you're not.
Greetings. Great. Afternoon, Council, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Katie Fox, Director at Durango 911. I'd like to start out by introducing our new Operations Manager, Waverly Kivit. She started with the Ringo Emergency Calm Center in 2021 and promoted to Supervisor in 2022. Prior to joining us, she had three years of experience with Las Vegas PD Dispatch. She brings real dedication, some really great operational perspective and excellent work ethic to to our team. And I'm excited to partner with her moving forward. Some high level updates for you about the center. We are implementing Intellicom Call Taking Software and CAD Statistical Dashboard in this upcoming month in October. Intellicom will provide consistency in call taking procedures so that we can continue to provide exceptional service to our callers as well as our client agencies. It'll also support our newest hires during the call take training phase to hopefully increase our trainee success and retention, which as we all know is a struggle in all 911 centers. The dashboard is going to allow us to more easily access statistics so that we can ensure we're meeting our performance standards and measures to continue to enhance that service. Moving on, Rocky Mountain PBS would like to create a short documentary about our center to be published on their website and YouTube channel, which is really exciting. It's an excellent opportunity to increase our organizational legitimacy as well as shine a light on the outstanding work our crew does day in and day out to our community. And then finally, staffing increases in successes. So knock on wood, we have not had a tenured staff member leave our department in over 17 months now, which is quite a run for us. If everyone who's in training currently continues on their track of success by end of year, I foresee us having 16 out of 22 of our positions filled. Just to give you some comparison, we had 11 positions filled out of 22. Our training program success rate continues to hover around 50 to 60% success, which might sound low, but industry wide training success rates in 911 centers are about 25%, maybe 30 if you're lucky. So we're doing pretty well there. Some performance metrics and statistics for you. So I just highlighted our summer months. This is our busiest times. I'm still trying to kind of figure out what information is helpful to you all as council. I would like to highlight a couple of items. First, the bottom table there, 911 answer times. These are our performance measures dictated by Nina and Apco. Those are national standards that we need to answer 90% of our 911 incoming 911 calls in 15 seconds or less. You can see by that table, we're in the mid to high 90s, which I do just want to point out for being at 50% staffing is pretty outstanding. Secondly, I'd like to provide an overview for you. That top left table, those are the number of calls that we receive and handle. So just for some context on workload and to also set the stage for for interpreting future statistics, wireless calls are 911 calls that come in by cell phones. It's not surprising that it's 88%. It's 2024. We all have cell phones. But what I did want to explain was what the Phase One and Phase Two meant, because I'm not sure if you're familiar and if you are, I apologize for for over explaining. But Phase One and Phase Two speak to wireless location information accuracy received on incoming 911 cellphone calls. So Phase Two is a triangulated location via cellphone towers with a margin of error. So what it means is the accuracy varies, but at least we have an idea of where somebody is calling from. So you can see the majority of our 911 cellphone calls are Phase Two calls. But I do want to point out Phase One, that's just the tower location. So that's the tower that the cellphone is pinging off of. So really what that means is we have zero location information for that caller. And any location determination is a result of our dispatcher's interrogation skills. And I just point that out because Phase One calls can really impact our call processing time. And I aim to bring that information to you here in upcoming future study sessions about call processing. So I just wanted that to be easily interpretable. Finally, we handled a fair amount of cardiac trauma and high priority law enforcement calls over the summer. We had a spike in August, as you can see. I would like to send a kudos out to our newest dispatcher, Xavier Han. Her work providing effective CPR instructions on one of the cardiac calls in July did result in a lifesaver award. That was exciting for us always. And then finally, I'd just like to close with some really great feedback we received from Jennifer Kirkland. She's the 911 State Program Manager at the Public Utilities Commission, and that's who oversees 911 in Colorado. Jennifer's worked in multiple PSAPs in her career. She was the Director at Grand Junction 911 for a number of years. She's incredibly active in the industry and I know for a fact she's been inside many, many 911 centers. So to receive this feedback from her was just a real affirmation for us for the work we're doing in our department to build a culture that actively reflects the city's values. And I'm proud to share that with you today. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Online? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, thank you. That's excellent. I appreciate your work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone online? Amazing report. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Cheers, Sam.
Sorry, that's my drum. Next up. Luke doesn't need an introduction. Here he is.
I've said it before and I'll say it now. I'll keep it like myself, short and sweet.
Library Services Department Monthly Report.
So today, instead of talking about our monthly event, our monthly stats from a couple of months ago, we're going to talk about what's happening this month, which is our premiere event, the Durango Public Library Literary Festival. We do consider it our premiere event of the year. You may have known, we just did Books, Broughts and Brews where we had 600 people come through in a couple of hours. And this is our capstone event. It is a two week of events. And we'll talk about this in a minute, but you know, this started many years ago and it used to be about two or three days. And last year it evolved and we continue to evolve it. We're really, really trying to make sure that this has something for everyone. When you look at some of the events we're going to show you, it's truly exciting how much you can do, something for people who are fans of literature, some for people who want to write literature themselves. We have a bit of everything. And thanks to a grant, a lot of these programs will be bilingual for the first time. So you can see just how many different events we've had and this is not even all of them. And it has always been and will continue to be funded by our friends of the library. And it's switched from, you know, fall to spring to summer, back to fall finally. And, you know, it it's really changed over the years from something that would have a couple of events or five or six events to last year was kind of our jump where we did about 13 events. So we more than doubled the amount of events we did in our maximum times and that was a real success. And we saw that some of our events did just as well as our big Keystone Author or close to. So that's where we made a big change. And going forward this year and all years in the future, every author we get will be local or regional. And that we can, with that, we're also expanding the programming. Because we found by having different programming, not only did we get more people through the doors, but we also got a really different demographic push that we had seen in years previous. And so we got different parts of the community to get invested in this kind of programming by having different kinds of authors. And so this year it's going to have even more so. So we went from that and so just like our Adult Service Department, which is clearly clinically insane, decided, well, let's just double that again. And so we have two weeks of full of events starting this Saturday with a Page One Writing Contest reception. Page One is a wonderful program that Nancy Stauffer does on the radio with KSUT and it's just reading of a first page of a book to get that we have at the library to get people interested and invested in trying a new story. Every year we have local artists and authors get to put their own Page One out. And one of the and a few of them get selected for a week of Page One readings or I'm sorry, month. And so we always have everyone who entered invited to meet each other, talk to local, you know, publishers and get to find out things. And so it's a wonderful party. And then also next week, we'll have the Durango Poet Laureates coming. That is Esther Berlin, who is our Durango Poet Lawyer and Zoe Golden, who's our Rising Poet Laureate. And that's only the second time they've been able to be together in an event. So it's a really hot ticket. And then the rest of the week, we have some really wonderful book clubs. And if you can see those names, those will be the people who will be having a wonderful programs with the following week. So very full week of events, but really just to get us geared up for Week Two, which is the big one. As you can see, we have three separate workshops. So we have nonfiction, storytelling and for people who have already finished a book. So any local authors in the region have to hit us up on Week Two because they will learn so much. I'm really, really excited about Heather Hansman's because she is also a member of our library board. And so it's wonderful for her to do this with us in that synergy. Then we have four really amazing author talks, Ramona Emerson, Scott Graham, Kensington Drake and Lily Painter, who are with NDN Girls Book Club, which is fantastic. And finally, Callie Fajardo Anstein, who is going to be working with Kirby Bennett from the Fort to have a conversation style about her work. And so just really, truly something anyone can jump into and a lot of really amazing insights into all sorts of different works of art. As I said, these will be bilingual for the first time ever. All the author visits from October 14th through the 18th will have simultaneous Spanish interpretation. And that's through a grant funding through Durango Creates. So thank you, Tommy and Durango Creates for, you know, really allowing us to be flexible and making that happen within the same budget year, which is not something we had originally planned for. And of course, all of you are invited, everyone in the community. And I really hope to see some of the city council here. This is such a great way to see so much of our community. But to do so, you're going to want to register. We made a lot of these events registration so that people can know what's coming. You know, if they don't get full, of course, we won't turn people away at the door. But if they do get full, then that's what happens. So we're really excited for that. We hope to see each and all of you there. Hopefully you'll be able to hit up multiple evenings and afternoons because it's really going to be such an amazing celebration of how rich our literary culture is in this region. And I will pass these out and answer any questions you have.
Excellent. Thank you, Luke. Any questions? Online? Great. Thank you so much. Next up, we have Parks and Recreation Monthly Report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council Members. Thanks for hosting. Rather than a monthly report, Kelly's asked that I give an update on what we're doing up at Lake Nighthorse. My name's Owen Talmage. I'm Natural Resource Manager for Parks and Rec. So I oversee the Natural Lands Division, which is the Open Space and Trails and Lake Nighthorse. So I'm going to talk to you briefly about our five year recreation plan. What is the five year recreation plan? Well, it's part of a cost sharing fund. Excuse me, cost sharing funding proposal that we've submitted to the Bureau of Reclamation. It's for 2025 to 2030. It gave us an opportunity also to do a divisional budget outlook and to help with planning for future improvements at the lake and part of the Parks and Rec five year CIP projects. Currently, our plan is in the hands of the Bureau of Rec under review as well as with the Lake Nighthorse Recreation Committee, which is tribal council members, Animus Appleta Project, the Bureau of Reclamation and of course, the city. Just to dive into what that cost share proposal is a little bit more, it's a 50 50 cost share grant funding through the Bureau of Reclamation that if it's all approved, will cover half of our net expenses. So all of our operating costs, salaries, construction, and then minus or less our revenues, whatever's left over, we split that with them. We hope to hear back in October as to the status of that. Give you just a quick background on the recreation planning up at Lake Nighthorse. In 2011, the city created a recreation master plan for the lake, which had some extensive public engagement. There was consultants, landscape architects involved and of course, staff. And what was come up with for the plan for developing recreation at the lake was the list you see here. Watercraft Recreation, the Swim Beach Aqua Park, Boat Docks, the Intran Station and Decontamination Station, interpretive and cultural sites, stormwater quality, trails, camping. So as of 2024, the city has checked off and built almost everything on that very comprehensive, very cost heavy list. With the exception of what would be the recreational trails and camping up at the lake, both of which have some pretty significant logistical and administrative challenges. So I wouldn't look for those anytime soon, but looking at the successes here, we did a whole lot. a whole lot. Kind of where we've been, where we're going, 2011 to 2017 was really the time of planning. That was when this rec plan was developed, the master plan, as well as all the agreements with the Bureau of Rec to take on recreation at the lake. 2018 to '18 was the development phase. That's when all this infrastructure was really built and opened and used. Looking forward, 2025 to 202030, we're going to shift from development more towards maintenance and upkeep of what we have. But that doesn't mean that improvements can't be made. So I'll go over what we're planning as far as those improvements. Quick orientation on the left side, the Swim Beach, which is the north side. The Whippet is out there. I don't have it in this image, my apologies. And on the south is where the boat ramp and the ADA fishing access would be. So some of these improvements, we're looking at some slope and drainage stabilization. The soils out there are highly erosive, and it's been many years since some of these drainages were built. It's time we took a look at some of the ditches and culverts and did some improvements to help get the water flowing and take care of some of the sediment out there. Speaking of erosion, we've seen quite a bit of impacts along the Swim Beach from wave action, and we're currently looking at some different options to mitigate that, which could potentially be retaining walls or wave attenuation devices, which are working, although we're looking at adding some more. Just to note, I've also got some years of when we think we might be able to implement some of this stuff, just for reference underneath. Some other improvements we're looking at is at the Swim Beach, up above it, we'd like to improve that area, turn it into some kind of a, more like a patio, a little more user-friendly, add some shade. People like to hang out and spend the day there, so we're going to try and make it a little nicer for them. We'd like to upgrade the paddlecraft launch. Obviously, paddleboarding, kayaking is really big at the lake, and what we've got, we want to provide more opportunities for people to get on the water. We'd like to improve some of the landscaping down by the ADA fishing dock and where that shade structure is, make it a little nicer for people, again, just to sit, enjoy the lake up there, and improve some access onto that road that goes out towards the dam, which serves as really a recreational trail. A few more improvements. We've looked at installing a footpath down from the overflow parking lot down to the Swim Beach to help people get down more conveniently and safely. Currently, everybody walks down the road, and it's just really not the best. We're also looking at developing a nature path around that peninsula there, which would start and stop at an interpretive area that would, you know, have signage and information of the cultural and natural history of the place. And one other item that we're proposing is to do some art installations up at the lake. And the idea there would be, we would put out a call to artists at some of our regional tribal communities and see if we can get some local artists interested in creating what would be probably sculptures that would reflect, again, some of that natural and cultural history, and help give people an opportunity to enjoy the sense of place of what that really is a special place up there. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions from council?
Just a quick one. Owen, do you foresee that for the art installations that we utilize the Durango Creative, what is it, DCD?
Yeah.
Durango Creative District to leverage some of their resources and knowledge with that call to artists?
Yes, I think we would definitely work with Tommy. As far as the funding, I'm not sure. I'd have to talk with them to see if that's, you know, in the scope of that grant. I think that's what you're talking about. But yeah, definitely, I know Tommy and that Creative District have a lot of lessons learned on how to put these together and have good success with them. So yeah, we would definitely work with them on that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Questions online? Perfect. Thank you so much for the presentation. Next up, we have Reliable Infrastructure and Community Connectivity with the Transportation Department Monthly Report. Sarah and Devin.
Good afternoon, council. Sarah Hill, Transportation Director. And if it's okay with council, I was actually going to let Devin give his Downtown's Next Step update first because he's under some time constraints.
Thank you, City Council, Madam Mayor, Devin King, Multimodal Manager. Good to see you all this afternoon. This update on Downtown's Next Step is very specific to engagement that we've heard over the past few months, and basically staff's response to that regarding the design. So I'll start with the community questionnaire, and then go into the Downtown's Next Step Focus Group and the forum, and then design status and changes. So regarding the questionnaire, we put this out May 17th, and it was online until June 7th. We did have a couple gift cards as incentives for folks to fill out that, and we had 703 responses, which is phenomenal. Eighty-three business property owners, 84% of respondents lived in Durango. Purpose of the questionnaire was to obtain feedback on design elements, so it was very specific to certain design elements. So we asked questions regarding objectives and preferred elements of the design, and we had one open-ended question, you know, for folks to let us know any other comments that they may have. So what we heard, wider sidewalks and more trees were the most important elements. Historic character and expanded pedestrian space were the most important objectives. In the open-ended comments, you know, we went through and analyzed that as staff, so we had 374 comments. Forty-seven percent were in favor of bike ped improvements. Twenty-four percent were neutral, and then 28% were opposed. And all this is in your packet as well, so you can kind of see that, including all those comments. So a little light reading for 374 comments. The questionnaire results, these two graphs just kind of show what we heard from the two questions that really asked me. Most of the questions were very demographic sort of questions, and then these two questions were the bulk of what we were looking at. So again, you can see wider sidewalks under question number nine. Regarding design elements, we're at the top of the priority, as well as additional trees, locating bike racks and trash cans, receptacles at the curb extension locations, water quality, which are bioswells. And then over on the objectives, you know, as you can see at the bottom, over 60%, we're saying maintain the historical downtown character. Expanded pedestrian space was next, with safer pedestrians and safer cycling being after that. So Downtown's Next Step Focus Group was kind of the next of public engagement we did this summer, and that occurred at the end of July, very beginning of August. So we had nine members. We were very intentional with this focus group. We wanted to make sure that there was equal representation, or I guess equitable representation on this group. So we had downtown business owners, county residents, cyclists, people living with a disability, minority groups, and both in favor and opposed to the project. And when we did that selection process, we actually took out the names, took out emails, and tried to take out as much of identifying in that, so that when we went through, we were solely basing our selections off of these criteria that you see above that. So we had two meetings. The first meeting covered background, design, and questionnaire results. One of the benefits of focus groups is we can really sit with a group of people and do just that. We can focus on the topic and really give a more detailed look at the project, and it, you know, and also we can do it consecutively and really allow them to fully understand what we're talking about a little bit better than maybe a normal public meeting would. The second meeting actually dove into the design elements, and so we focused on the design elements of ADA parking space locations, loading zones, sidewalk and travel lane widths, trees, curb extensions, and parking. And one of the big concepts that we really tried explaining to them was, if we move, you know, if we move curb extension here, well, then that impacts bistro space, that also impacts, you know, that provides more parking, but it also reduces bioswell, so water quality, because those are also built into the curb extension. So if you touch one thing, you're going to touch multiple, and those all have different consequences. So what we heard from the focus group was ADA spaces, everybody was pretty much in support of that. Loading zones, there is a need for curbside loading, so that's the L zone that's painted on the curb towards the intersections, with the addition of loading in the center-left turn lane. There was interest for that curbside loading to be flexible parking during busy season, so basically have that curbside loading in the winter for when there's a wind road, that snow in the middle that we pile up in the middle center-left turn lane. And, but in the summertime, when we're not needing to do that, we can focus on putting deliveries in the center-left turn lane and having that be parking for folks coming downtown. Lane and sidewalk widths, they, you know, maintain lane widths as-is was a big comment that came out of that. There was also concern about sidewalk widths and usability for bistros. So specifically, that was regarding somebody who currently has a bump-out program. They were concerned that with the expanded sidewalks, that they would actually have less space than they do now with their bump-out program, because they actually extend in front of the business that's adjacent to them, which is something that we hadn't really thought of. So that was great feedback. Trees, most everybody was in favor of trees. They did bring up the concern and the need to maintain them. If we were to add additional trees, just making sure that those were maintained. Curb extensions and parking, so there were several that expressed the desire for more parking and shortening the curb extensions, and I will get to that in just a little bit. So the business forum. You know, when we put out our questionnaire, the city's questionnaire regarding the design, at the same time, simultaneously or concurrently, Bid, Chamber, and Local First all coordinated and put out a survey to their constituents, mainly focused on businesses. Their questionnaire was a little bit different. We did kind of try to coordinate with them, but, you know, they were looking for very specific questions for their businesses. So that went out at around the same time. We kind of heard feedback from them regarding that survey, and we were in communication with them over the summer and worked with them to get a business forum held. So Bid, Local First, and Chamber actually organized that forum and invited us there to answer some questions, which they provided to us prior to the forum. We had multiple department staff, including, you know, Keet Orde, City Engineer, Sarah Hill, myself, and Tommy Crosby were all there to answer the various questions. There was approximately 100 attendees, and those questions and answers were posted to the city's project page, and then we're currently still answering some of the additional follow-up questions that they had. So with all of that engagement that we have done this summer, we, you know, have been looking at the design itself. So the design status, we're still in that preliminary design stage for the 600 and 700 blocks, and, you know, per your direction, we'll be continuing with the design, but not necessarily the construction portion of it. But we will be making changes to the preliminary design per the feedback we've heard, and on the next slide, I'll kind of talk about what those changes are that we're looking at. So the pilot status, I don't know if y'all noticed, the pedlet, so when we put out the pedlet on the 600 block in front of Fuzzy Wigs, originally Fuzzy Wigs had planned to, what we call, activate it or use it and kind of build up their sidewalk space. Just because of how late in the season we got it out, they weren't able to kind of get that together. So since that pedlet was not being used, we did remove that last Friday, and we are still moving forward with installing temporary curb extensions, and that is looking to go out next week after the cowboy gathering has gone on. And that was kind of a conversation we had with some business owners on Main that prompted that waiting until after the cowboy gathering. So we will still be installing those per what we had discussed in the grant application. So design updates, we will be shortening curb extensions and adding four parking spaces back just on the preliminary design. We'll be showing that here on the next slide, and keeping lane widths and reducing sidewalk widening. So as I kind of mentioned earlier, you do one thing, that changes another. You know, I think most of us are used to that in life at this point. But what I'm showing here over on the right-hand side, you'll see shortened curb extension and add parking spaces back. So those curb extensions that we're showing highlighted, they don't have a bioswell or water quality associated with them, so that's, you know, why we chose those to really specifically shorten and add parking spaces back. The trolley stop on the bottom right, that was actually a location that we needed to change anyway, so we're shortening that one. Further evaluation of the curb extension links at the end of the 700 block, the reason why we're saying further evaluation is because of that need for water quality. So again, if we do this project, we do have to do water quality with it. So we'll need to see by changing how much pavement there is, that does actually mean more drainage that is going into that water quality, so we may need to expand them, and, you know, just looking at all of that, there's a lot of math involved. Regarding the 600 block, one of the things that we've been talking a lot about is delineating loading in the center-left turn lane. So we have heard concerns from folks regarding when they're making those left-hand turns, just if somebody's loading at the end of the block, it makes it really difficult to make those left-hand turns. So that's something we'll also continue further looking at. And then updating the cross-sections. So like I said, maintaining current lane widths, what that means is 12-foot center-left turn lane, 10 and 1/2-foot travel lanes on each side, and then the 8-foot parking lane, which is what we currently have out there. And so then that leaves about three feet of space for expanding the sidewalk versus the five, which we have discussed in the preliminary point. That was really fast, but that is the end of my presentation.
Does anyone have any questions for Devin on next steps? Yes.
Thank you for that concise update. Okay, so I'm curious, since you're still in the design phase, what about the infrastructure of the sewer and all that? Is that going to be included in the plans? Because, you know, I'd kind of like to see what that is once we get down towards the end of this project.
Yes, so that is being simultaneously done, and that is being managed by the Utility Division, and it's actually coming from a different funding source, but they, basically, they're paused right now because we're paused on the full design, because they have to kind of coordinate together. But that will continue once we start, once the grant funding has been appropriated and we resume design. Yes.
Any other questions? Anything online? No? All right. Thank you, Devin. Sarah?
Right. Just have three quick slides for you here. Sarah Hill, Transportation Director, and I'm presenting a transit update in support of the Reliable Infrastructure and Community Connectivity goal. So we had a record-breaking month in August. We provided over 51,000 rides in the month of August, and that's the first time that we've broken 50,000 rides since October 2014. And that was back when we were offering free trolley rides year-round on the North Main Trolley. So it's, we're starting to very consistently hit those historic benchmarks, which is really exciting. That brings us to a total of 314,266 rides through the end of August. And then if you're looking at the June and July, June, July, and August numbers here at the end of the chart, you can see that we had another very successful and record-breaking year for the Free Fair program, which you funded through your discretionary use of the lodger's tax. So we saw a 12.3% increase in ridership in the summer months over the same timeframe last year. We offered 138,719 rides within that period. And I just wanted to pass along gratitude from our riders, who you don't get to hear from very much, but we feel a lot of appreciation for those free rides. So thank you so much for funding the Free Fair program through your lodger's tax last year. Also wanted to check in on our micro-transit service and give you a quick status update mid-year. This, these stats are from January 1st through the end of June, so the first six months of the year. And in fact, we have given quite a few more rides on the evening transit service now. We're up to 11,951 rides for the year. Although our goal is 30 minutes from the time somebody requests a ride on the app, we're actually seeing an average wait time of just 15 minutes. Passengers are riding about 9.3 minutes and going an average of 3.6 miles for their trips. And then we have a great rider rating score of 4.9 out of 5 stars, so people are really happy with this evening service. Here's some visuals of our rider pickup and drop-off locations. The map on the left shows the concentration of rider origins, and it's not surprising that most of those are in the central business district downtown. The destination map on the right shows the several hotspots in all four directions of downtown, and I think the very exciting thing to point out is that every one of these hotspots is directly on top of an affordable or workforce housing community. So people who really need the service and who are relying on the service for some affordable transportation options are really transportation options are really taking advantage of it, and I think that's, that's a huge success of the program. And each one of the trips represents a $2 ride instead of up to a $50 taxi ride to some of these locations like in Three Springs. That is, I was just going to give a quick ridership update, and that's what I've got for you, if you have any questions for me.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone have any questions? Phenomenal numbers, so exciting. All right, next up, we have Public Works Department Monthly Report. Hi, Laura.
Laura Rick from Public Works. We'll be talking about the July and August updates for Public Works today, and Public Works falls under the strategic plan goal of reliable infrastructure and community connectivity. In water treatment, we treated 43.2 million gallons of water in July and 30.5 million gallons in August, and pumped 38.5 million gallons of water from the Animus up to the plant in July and 17.8 million gallons in August. So you can see there's quite a big difference between July and August. So rain helped to lower that water demand in August, but we are reaching the point in the year where the demand begins decreasing as irrigation systems are turned off for the winter. Two of our operators received new certifications, passing treatment exams and backflow testing exams, and the operators have been working to replace the monitoring equipment shed that sits on top of our clear well, which is the finished water tank at the plant. And this new shed will help ensure more consistent temperatures for the monitoring equipment and help keep out unwanted guests like WASPs. In wastewater treatment, we treated 43, or 45.3 million gallons of wastewater in July and 46.3 in August. Those numbers are similar. So next month, I'll present you with a graph that illustrates the monthly and annual differences between the treatment numbers in water and wastewater. You'll see that throughout the year, the water demand increases and decreases with the seasons and depending on the irrigation demands, but that the flows going into the wastewater plant from town stay relatively the same throughout the year. They're not necessarily dependent on seasons or irrigation, of course. The cogeneration system that converts waste of methane gas into electricity generated about 25,000 kilowatt hours in July and 31,000 in kilowatt hours in August of energy, which is used to help power the wastewater plant, and it reduced our electric bill over the two months by about $3,800. Digestor number two was taken offline to begin draining it to be cleaned and inspect the liner inside, and one of the primary clarifiers was also taken offline, drained, cleaned, and it's had its liner replaced. And you can see the pictures here, the top pictures, the yellow liner was being removed and media blasted off, and then on the other side is the new pink liner that was sprayed on. So this helps protect, protect the concrete infrastructure from corrosive sulfuric acid, which is formed in wastewater systems due to hydrogen sulfide mixing with water. The wastewater plant had its sanitary survey from the State Health Department, which is an audit and inspection of our operations, our maintenance, reporting, record-keeping, et cetera. And we're really proud to report that CD-PHE found no violations, no significant deficiencies. So the wastewater plant's doing an excellent job. In distribution, the crews consisted, continued assisting with the North College Drive and 250, 251 projects with water tie-ins, service lines, valve installations, and other items. They oversaw the planned replacement of a 14-inch valve near the Sky Ridge Roundabout, which was discovered to be leaking during a previous water break. They responded to several water breaks, one of which was at the Mercy Housing on Gigline Gulch Road, where a relatively young pipe blew out with about a silver dollar-sized hole. And the picture here with that hole, that pipe's only 24 years old. They should last 70 to 100 years. So this pipe was found to be bedded in native clay-rich soils rather than proper bedding materials, and so it was exposed to moisture constantly. It was just trapped around the pipe, which caused that pitting and all the way down to the concrete liner inside. So our current standard installation requires that the pipe be bedded in pea gravel or similar to help moisture drain away from the pipes. The crews did regular planned and unplanned maintenance, like exercising valves, replacing meters, and repairing the service lines, as well as attending several trainings. In collections, the crews performed regular maintenance, cleaning and checking lift stations, cleaning the sewer mains, some of which are problem areas in town, and they have to be cleaned twice a month. They performed over 500 locates, including emergency locates, and they attended the same safety trainings with the distribution crews. The Streets Division was busy getting the roads painted in preparation for school to start, using 460 gallons of paint around town, and all the school zones received new paint, and the flashing signage was reprogramming, reprogrammed for school start and stop times. They swept 2,400 miles of road, replaced over 400 signs, repaired 118 potholes, and cleaned out ditches around town. And after the storms that we had, they were extremely busy cleaning up roads, stormwater inlets, and stormwater basins. Over July and August, 158 loads of trash was taken to the landfill, 497 tons of recycled material was diverted from the landfill, and we took in $23,570 at the public drop-off from 3,300 transactions over those two months. They added six commercial trash accounts and two recycling accounts, and they had a, or we had a very busy booth at the farmer's market. We had a cool recycling challenge where people had to sort the recycling in amount of time to get toys. People really liked it. And the kids were the best at it. The adults didn't do very well. So our recycling contract was awarded to Waste Management for a year with options to extend the contract, and we received a new shiny truck, a front-loading truck, and the recycle center's pavement out front got a surface treatment to help extend its In capital improvement, construction management, we're in the middle of construction season in July and August, and they continue to put projects out to bid and issue contracts for projects, including the Florida Outfall up at the water plant, Main Avenue signal repair, West Ninth Mill and Overlay that goes from Main down to Camino, Collagen Eighth Intersection and Block 54 Alley Drainage Projects. The wastewater plant's primary clarifier project that I was talking about before with the pink liner, that was started and finished in July, and the Chapman Hill 250, 251, North College Drive, and Lake Nighthorse Entrance Projects continued with significant process, progress in those two months. We hired a new inspector, and they started in September, and members of the crew received new certifications by attending classes and passing their exams. In engineering, the division finalized and recorded the second plat for Durango Mesa, continued work on the entrance road and water line design, and started the emergency egress road construction up to the top of the mesa. Construction was completed at the gallery, which is the last lot along Escalante Drive to be developed. The process for annexing County Road 250, 251 has begun with the petitions taken to the Community Development Commission. Permits were issued for Atmos Gas to replace sections of aging pipeline in our area. Bless you. And in stormwater, the 32nd Street Extended Detention Basin was completed. A street sweeping study was conducted for the Mile High Flood District, and Block 54 Alley Drainage Design was completed. We also had a few illicit discharges into the Animus River during this time that were reported to the state, including two porta-potties that were thrown into the river at the 29th Street Put-in. So I've added a slide to this update that we haven't had in the previous months to highlight the public outreach and education efforts, events that we've been hosting or participating in. As I mentioned a few months ago, we attended the Children's Water Festival in May, and we had the largest city representation to date with five classes taught all by our employees to children. Every Thursday morning, we hold in-house water and wastewater operator classes, and this helps prepare our operators to pass their certification exams. We focus on math, treatment processes, operations, troubleshooting, asset management, long-range planning, budgeting, other subjects. It's all related to our water system, though, but we use other water systems and other municipalities around the state and the country to compare to. We've hosted seven trainings since May, and we've reached capacity for every one of them with wait lists. We're using the Santa Rita Conference Room, and because many of the trainings involve facility tours or use of the shop there. We've attended the farmer's market throughout the summer, and we've represented each of the Public Works divisions there with games, challenges, puzzles, show-and-tell, and other activities for kids and adults. And local schools tour the water and wastewater facilities, and we're currently working with Fort Lewis, and I plan to get with NINR to introduce Public Works into the school's curriculum so that students have an understanding of what it takes to build, maintain, and operate critical infrastructure. We're also working with MSI or Mountain Studies Institute to create informational materials that we can use at any events that we go to or during tours or to put up on our website or social media. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm curious. Okay, so you mentioned that you hired one inspector in September. Are we at full capacity for inspection now, or do we still need inspectors?
We are down two inspectors in capital projects right now.
Is that going to impact the inspection before backfilling any projects, or are you going to hire?
Right now, the project managers are having to do inspections as well.
Are they qualified to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Excellent. Any other questions online? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, I'm assuming we have the airport aviation department monthly report with Tony.
Good afternoon, Council. Tony Vicari, Airport Director at the Durango La Plata County Airport. Just run through a quick monthly update. Just starting off with a few statistics, we continue our trend to have a very busy year in terms of passenger traffic. Through August, airline deployments are up 16% year-to-date. If we just look at the summer only, so June, July, and August, that number was actually up 21% from 2023, the busiest summer of all time that we've ever seen at the airport. That's up 6% over the previous busiest summer, which was in 2021. As you may recall, 2021, we saw significant inbound tourism surges into Southwest Colorado and most of the Mountain West post-COVID, and so that had marked our prior peak summer, and we saw some settling in '22 and '23 until this year, when it surged back up above that 2021 number. So definitely a very busy summer on that front. Unlike that 2021 point, if you go down the chart a little bit here, we're seeing more diverse growth. If you look at the parking lot exit transactions and rental car contract days, they're both up in percentage numbers that are very similar to the overall proportionate employment growth, meaning that our busyness and passenger traffic has been driven pretty broadly across our sectors, unlike 2021, when it was easy to point at inbound tourism as a significant driver, where we were outsized on that front. We've seen a normalization, and we're back to seeing significant growth for both local utilization as well as inbound traffic. So we're not seeing it driven by one particular sector this year. And then lastly, a couple of the big percentage numbers, terminal concession revenue, you've heard me say this throughout the year, driven primarily by food and beverage revenue being up substantially in the terminal with our new vendor, as well as new location in the Phase 1A concession space that was opened up earlier this spring. And then the general aviation landed weight, that's private aircraft, that number is skewed a little bit. We switched to a different entity for tracking and billing our general aviation traffic at the airport. So I think this is skewing a little bit high on that front, not necessarily because our traffic is up so substantially, but rather we're doing a better job of capturing it on that front. Just looking specifically at total airline passengers, you can see the green line is 2024. As you can see, it's outpacing '23, our pre-pandemic baseline, and then that gray line, as I mentioned, is 2021. That was that big time when we saw that huge peaking and surging during the summer in particular and that post-pandemic environment. But here in 2024, we're seeing that we're now exceeding that through core summer as well as the rest of the year. Quick update on airline route network, no major changes here. The October airline flight schedule is pretty consistent. Biggest difference is that you'll now see we have six daily flights to Denver on United Airlines. That was a change in the last handful of days of September here. So within the last week, United kicked over to six daily flights instead of the prior five. What that entails is a second remain overnight aircraft, so that's an arrival that arrives into Durango about 10:30 in the evening. That aircraft and crew spend the night and then are leaving early about 5:30 a.m. the following day. So now we have two late arrivals and two early departures, one at 5:30 and one at 7:00 on the United side. Consistent on the American side, three to four daily to Dallas, two to three daily on Phoenix, no major changes there. And then late August, United did wrap up their seasonal Durango-Houston service, the second summer in a row we've seen that run post-pandemic. Was very strong demand this year in terms of passenger utilization. We saw load factors or percent of seats filled exceed 85% this year, which is extremely strong, particularly for seasonal service. So that'll really augment our ongoing discussions with United about the future expansion of Durango-Houston service. So that's an ongoing conversation that we continue to push on, given in particular the amount of demand we've seen over the last two summers on a sustained basis. And then just kind of wrapping up a little bit on projects on the terminal side, Phase 1A, as we've been sharing, is substantially complete and fully open to the public. We just have some trailing electrical components that are still waiting long lead. Got some updates from our contractor today that those are mercifully finally on, en route after the supply chain challenges. So we anticipate being able to close that project out in the next 60 days would be my anticipation, as long as we don't get a hiccup on the shipping side. And then looking ahead towards Phase 1B, we've achieved a couple of very big milestones in the last 30 days. Looking ahead to tomorrow, we actually have an official groundbreaking scheduled for the afternoon, so invite any of our counselors to join us at that event. We're looking forward to kicking off what will be the biggest capital project in the history of the Durango Airport. So very exciting to officially break ground. I think it was shared with Council prior, we accepted a $13 million FAA grant as a major funding instrument for this project. That grant was actually more than anticipated prior, based on our prior discussions with the FAA, and so that's going to allow us to move a few pieces around in our capital program, which you'll hear about in future meetings on that front. So looking to kick that off. We've got a lot of moving pieces to start with. We've had to move some roadway impacts and traffic movements have shifted out in the front curb of the airport, some of the pedestrian flow between our rental car lot and terminals as detour options. So those are the impacts of construction, but so far, we feel like those have been settled in fairly harmlessly and pretty effectively for the traveling public. Couple of quick other updates here. Wastewater system, as a reminder, the airport operates its own water and wastewater systems. We've been working for several years through a very extended design process and CD-PHE approval process on design. And finally, we're able to put that project out to bid. Bids closed last week, about 10 days ago. Unfortunately, we received very high bids on that particular project, something Council is familiar with across the board on that front. These were shockingly high for us, so as a result, Council can expect to see us in front of the group within the next handful of meetings to talk about a potential budget amendment to fund that project, which is a CD-PHE mandated project that we do at the airport. So there's limited options for us to work around, given some of those high costs. Aside from that, we wrapped up our lower pump house water tank replacement. This is a water project for the airport, so that is now complete. As you see, more and more things getting checked off here as we get to wrap up the year. We'll be doing pavement maintenance on all of our roadways out in front of the airport over the next month here with seal coat and crack fill work to be able to head us heading into the end of the year here. And just wrapping up with a few photos, these are a couple of our utility projects, upcoming work at the wastewater lagoons, and then you can see the new raw water tank on the left there. And then lastly, our airport fire station restroom rehab. So always want to make sure we're also supporting our staff. We have an aircraft rescue firefighting and operations division that work almost 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and work out of our fire station, which is in and of itself an aging facility. So we invested in some restroom rehab in that and just completed that project as well. So happy to be able to bring some improved conditions to our staff on a daily basis. And with that, I would take any questions from Council.
Excellent. You've been busy. Any questions from Council?
Yeah. Real quick, just having supply chain disruptions got me thinking, do you anticipate anything with the 1B? Do you anticipate anything with the 1B, you know, supply chain issues with the port authority strikes going on and that potentially setting back some timelines? And I guess the follow-up would be, is there any timelines that we had to fit into that FAA grant that we have to spend money by?
Yeah, no, good question. So answer the second part first. The timeline on FAA grants is they are valid for four years from issuance. So we have quite a bit of runway on the FAA grant there. Those were just issued a couple of weeks ago.
Pun intended.
Yeah, exactly. Someone stole my pun earlier. I think that was Tommy. That was a good one. So we have a four-year performance period. We don't anticipate any issue. The project is scheduled for about a 27-month duration, so a little over two years. So we have quite a bit of wiggle room there on the backend to manage any kind of supply chain or schedule disruptions. So I don't anticipate any challenge relative to the grant performance period. So that's not a particular stressor for us. As it relates to the overall project, you're definitely, you know, right. We're going to have to monitor that and maintain it. One of the advantages of working under our current agreement setup is we have a construction manager at Risk Program with non-construction as our construction manager. That's really what we utilize them is to help manage the project, put pressure on their subcontractors and continue to keep us on schedule. And that's really one of those benefits. We've seen some of the impacts here. We talked about it on Phase 1A on the electrical side. In Phase 1B, the initial things we're tracking are baggage conveyance systems is a particular long lead item. So we're pushing hard to get early releases and approvals on submittals on that so we can get the components ordered, since baggage claim is the first piece that is coming in terms of construction on this project. So that'll be potentially a tight item we'll need to watch as we get closer to the spring to early summer opening of the new baggage claim space, because the conveyance unit is obviously a critical aspect of that. So that's something we're tracking. There's no major electrical components in the first component of this project, that bag claim area. So the good news is now that we're under contract, we can use our construction manager to begin procuring and ordering a lot of the supplies that are a little bit later in that 27-month construction cycle. So it's just sort of fortuitous that we don't have particular components in this first piece of construction that we anticipate is big problems, with probably the outlier being the conveyance. So we'll keep an eye on that. But as of now, we feel like we're sitting in an okay position.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, questions for Tony online? Yeah, Melissa?
Tony, I just wasn't sure if you were going to talk at all about the last meeting we had with the Airport Commission and our long discussions around airport fees.
Yeah, no, I can definitely kind of provide a quick primer. So as Melissa's referencing, the Airport Commission meets monthly in September. It's one of our more impactful meetings of the year where we adopt formal rates for the next fiscal year, for 2025. The airport sets a variety of rates and charges, because as you know, the airport functions as an enterprise fund where we, our revenues support our operational expenditures at the airport. So we set a number of key fees on that. The item that was discussed at great length and most discussion for us revolves around airline fees. So the fees that we charge to our airline providers to use our facilities. That boils down to us for two fees. We charge airlines landing fees, so it's calculated based on landed weight. And then we also charge them terminal rent for both exclusive lease space, like offices and ticket counters, and then joint-use space, like public circulation areas, gate space, et cetera. So those fees are set up in a way to obviously drive enough revenue for the airport to support its operations and our capital program, but also to maintain competitiveness, because airlines do have the ability to move their services elsewhere. We do see that where airlines will move and shift and actually exit markets in extreme cases where demand doesn't support the flights or, you know, fees may be too high. So we had some extended conversation on this. The history here is that DRO has had historically very low airline fees, like significantly low. When I first came to the airport, we were charging somewhere in the magnitude about three to four to five times less than most of our competitors. So we were basically the cheapest airport you could find in the entire country, just about, on that front, which is great for the airlines, but not so good for managing the finances of the airport and investing back in our infrastructure. So it's been one of my initiatives in my time at the airport to move our revenue structure and our airline fees to a place where they're more competitive with our peers. So it's been a multi-year process, and this year did mark a bigger jump. So the fee structure that was ultimately approved by the Airport Commission involved about a 26% increase in our overall fee structure to the airlines, which obviously sounds like a big number when you've got a, you know, north of 25% fee increase. But the important thing to note is that our CPE, which is cost per employment, that's the bottom line, you know, number that the airline's actually paying per passenger. That's not a fee we assess, but it's a measure of the total, you know, fees that they pay us, divided out against the number of passengers. Even with these increases, we are going to be still the cheapest regional airport in the entire state of Colorado, will be less than a third of the cost of the Aspen Eagle and Hayden Steamboat Springs of the state, and also Lessin Grand Junction and Montrose on that front. So, you know, even though we're making a singular large jump in a single year, which is driven primarily by the need to fund some of the debt service costs associated with Phase 1B of the terminal, the resulting CPE or net cost to the airlines still positions us very strategically, where we are competitively well-positioned as the lowest-cost regional airport in the state of Colorado and very competitive with the majority of regional airports across the Mountain West and west on that front. So that was a big part of the discussion. We talked about a whole range of other fees as well. But the airline fees are probably the most impactful one.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up. In case there was any questions from Council, I wanted them to hear about that discussion from you, because I was going to report on it during my, our Council reports on actions. But in case there's any questions, I thought it'd be great while you're up to address that.
Perfect. Anything else? Excellent. I'm looking forward to the groundbreaking tomorrow, and thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Next up, we have engaged informed community with no report on community engagement this month, no report for strategic workforce development. So we're done. We're going to adjourn. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Great. See you at 5:30.
See you at 5:30.